To the Republic for which it stands, one mission under oath, and the principle of equal opportunity and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone, for attending tonight.
Um, just so everybody is aware, we are recording the meetings. We're just letting everybody know in advance that going forward that these meetings are recorded. So we do have a forum tonight. So I will call for other business. All right, no other business to be added. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I motion we approve the consent agenda.
All right, then moved by Jamie and seconded by Kathy. Any discussion? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will jump right in. We will move down to department reports. We don't have anything from the PD, correct? No, first, okay. On the list, sir. And then we'll move into the city hall report.
All right, so for this staff report, um, I just wanted to highlight some key updates and accomplishments that were, um, that have gone on the last couple of years. Um, the city has experienced significant progress in operations, financial management, community improvements, and staff contributions. This report details the accomplishments and provides a recap of recent incentives and ongoing projects. So for the end of the year, um, financial reports, ten ninety-nines have gone out, W-two's just got done today. Um, all of our twenty twenty-four boxes are in the back, and we already have five boxes ready to go to archives, which is actually a huge accomplishment. Um, staffing update. So Carly has been instrumental in managing front office operations, including billing and agenda preparation. Her dedication and willingness to learn has significantly supported the smooth functioning of City Hall. Toledo is fortunate to have someone with her level of commitment and skill. She is dedicated to learning throughout twenty twenty-four. Carly was involved in many trainings that gave her knowledge to take on the role. She's actually absent today. Her horse died this morning. Yeah, so she's not here. She was at work, but she couldn't be here today. So, um, we are collaborating with the temp agency for interim support while we recruit for a permanent part-time billing clerk position. We actually brought someone in today, so hopefully, um, she takes hold of the position. Job postings will be available next week. They came out a little early, obviously. Um, so twenty twenty-four accomplishments, park reservation system. So our online transition from Kemp Olsen Park Reservations, from a paper system to an online system in twenty twenty-three, thanks to Cindy's extensive efforts, because I know that was a huge project. Um, this change streamlined operations, reduced manual tasks, and made it easier for residents and visitors to book facilities. And so our revenue went from seventy-four hundred dollars a year in twenty twenty-two to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty and twenty-three, so it's over ten thousand dollars just a year. Um, for anyone that camps, you know, if you're gonna go somewhere far, you wanna be able to book, not just show up and hope that there's a camp spot there. So getting that system online was huge, and it's very, very, very appreciated. Um, I think we are getting ready to switch to another, um, platform, but having it online, and it's literally takes off. They were kind of working out of, I think, just a notebook, um, and reservations were going years in advance, and there was no way I could keep track of that. Um, so the DOCSO payment system, DOCSO is a twenty-four-seven online payment platform. It has become vital tool for City Hall operations, significantly reducing the need for manual payment processing. And so there's some payment stats, people, um, I won't go over all of them, but we had in twenty-two, um, four hundred cash or three hundred and sixty-six cash transactions, nineteen hundred checks, and six hundred and forty-seven credit cards. So that's six hundred and forty-seven calls of people calling in, where you have to sit there and log into the credit card platform and take all their information, their billing address. Uh, and it took a lot of time. And so now we've moved from, um, almost no credit card transactions, really. I think we've maybe had like fifteen in twenty-four, um, two hundred cash transactions, but four hundred and ninety-one DOCSO transactions. So those come in in one lump email, and it takes fifteen minutes, as opposed to dealing with people and taking calls. So that was a huge, um, huge thing for us as well in the office. It really cut down on a lot of time. Um, legal fee reduction. So we incorporated AI, uh, ChatGPT into a lot of our document preparation. Um, so our legal fees went from thirty-four thousand and twenty-three to twenty-six thousand and twenty-four. So that's another ten thousand dollars, it's about, that we saved. Um, REIT two, Toledo implemented an additional point two-five REIT two excise tax allocation. Uh, this allows the city to retain more funds for the three O two fund. Uh, our REIT two revenue was almost ten thousand dollars. It was ninety-four hundred dollars. That was just sitting there every year for us yet. And this does not come from the seller of the house. It actually, it's already going to Lewis County or to the state, I think. And so we're just getting it back from them. Building permits. Um, Eric led the transition to an in-house building permit process, generating significant new revenue, and I kicked and screamed the whole way. Um, so twenty twenty-two, we took in seven hundred and thirty-five dollars in pre-application fees. And that's where people came in, and they basically said they wanted to go get a permit. We took ten or twenty dollars, and they took it to Lewis County, and Lewis County cashed in on our permit. So just in twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, I don't think we started taking building permits till mid-year. Um, we've already taken almost eight thousand dollars in building permits and over three thousand dollars in plan reviews. I'm assuming that's probably gonna at least triple for twenty-five. Yeah. Um, operational impact. So workflows have, we've streamlined the, the permit processing. So one permit takes about fifteen to thirty minutes. Um, with I-Works making it, you know, we're totally organized, and it makes it really not that big of a, of a task. Um, law enforcement, cost and revenue. So I know this was one thing, um, Eric, that you asked about. So the, the cost for jail beds for twenty twenty-four was, um, forty-two hundred dollars for the year, our criminal justice costs, which is prosecution, um, filing fees, anything that's court-related was about six thousand. Public defender, yeah. Um, and this isn't a real accurate, but it's just kind of what I've gone off of, um, logging everything. Um, and payments received was seventy-four hundred dollars, and this includes a lot of deferred payments, so we won't see a lot of those, um, ticket payments roll in for, you know, a year, even eighteen months sometimes. Doesn't include a judge, correct? Um, so it looks like this is projected to pretty much break even, which basically meets our financial goals for that. Property cleanup effort. So I know a lot of people probably watching, um, there's been a lot of complaints on a certain property in town. Um, I reached out to Brandon a couple of months ago to kind of see what they did over at Winlock, because I know they have a lot of houses out there. Um, so he recently stepped in to assist with the property, and that has been an ongoing issue for several months. About two months ago, I reached out to him to discuss potential solutions for addressing the situation. Through this collaboration, we were able to secure a contract, one that reportedly had been used and was successful in the past in Winlock. Um, I want to acknowledge the many calls, emails, and people walking in to complain about this property. Please know that your concerns have been heard, and while the city's authority in these matters are limited, we take, we are taking action within the bounds of what we can legally do. After securing the residence agreement to the contract, we provided them with an additional time to clean up the property. Unfortunately, when no progress was made, we had to involve our legal team to escalate the matter. In an effort to address the issue directly, I contacted Brandon and asked if he would accompany me to the prop, to the property to meet with the homeowner and those staying there. Despite his busy schedule, he made time to join me that day. Together, we were able to have a constructive conversation with the homeowner and the occupants, explaining the seriousness of the situation and what steps needed to be taken. Brandon offered to return with a jumped, a dump truck to assist with removing trash. On Sunday, Brandon, Eric, Sherry, and I returned to the property and worked alongside the property owner and residents to clear a significant amount of trash. We managed to fill an entire dump truck and remove additional furniture and miscellaneous items. The property owner and occupants had made some progress on their own as well, having prepared around twenty bags of garbage for removal. Um, they've continued to do this as well. They call me every other day, and there's new bags that we're picking up. Um, I haven't personally been by there, but, um, while there's still a great, uh, deal of work to be done, we are maintaining regular communication with the property owner to sustain the progress we've made. A motor home has already been removed from the property, and we are working on getting the trailer removed this week. Brandon has volunteered to continue assisting with this effort. His dedication and hard work have been invaluable, addressing this challenging situation. Um, is, is the other motor home camper things on? Yeah, so there's a couple other vehicles that need to go, but we're working on getting those out. Um, so next steps and focus for twenty-five. Finalizing the hiring of a part-time billing clerk to support continued operational efficient, efficiency. Um, continued progress on cleanup and monitoring properties in Toledo to get our little city cleaned up. Um, my closing remarks, twenty twenty-four marked a year of progress and growth for our city of Toledo, and twenty-five promises to build on this momentum. None of this would have been possible without the dedication of our staff volunteers, our council members, and community members. So thank you for everyone who continues to contribute to Toledo's success. That's all. It was a lot. Any questions? Oh, and I just put fifty-four thousand dollars in the pig today, or in the LGIP.
All right, well, since we have no question, we'll move on to public works. Um, so Public Works was not able to be here tonight. I know Jay is in class, so, um, daily procedures and testing were performed without any major issues. Uh, they did inspect and consult, inspected and consulted with KR Homes as they put utilities in the ground on South Fifth, Maple, and Cedar Street. Um, they're utilizing the, or they utilize the I-Works permitting software to log pictures of connections, distances, specs, et cetera. It's going well for them so far, user-friendly. Uh, Jay did attend a three-day class on water distribution, presented by Evergreen Rural Water of Washington in preparation for the WE, WDM one OIT's operator and training test. They ran the sour's testing on digester two at the wastewater treatment plant and started running the screw press again, performed line locating and leak detection for the Collins residence. Um, they met with them to discuss leak issues and metering processes. They assessed, uh, potholes on the old first street, um, kind of where the, at the end of the asphalt and the gravel. They made a repair to that section that is owned by the city. Um, does anybody have any questions for Public Works?
I'd like to see, uh, about fire hydrants exercise.
Yes, yep, that is on, they, they discussed that with them as well.
And then also the gravel road that we use to get to our boat.
Talk to them about that as well.
Great, yeah, it's pretty bad back there.
Yep.
I think that was just done today.
What was it? Okay, great.
You're talking about by Grog's House? The.
Yeah, right back here.
Right back here, though.
Yeah.
It's a, it was new. There are the gravel.
Great.
They did that at your portal, didn't they? Yeah, they did. That was the one at the end of, um, First Street. Okay.
This, this Pine Street, was that the ones that were here?
No, no, different one. They were, uh, we were doing, I think, just a leak protection for them, so. No questions? All right, we will go ahead and move on to council reports. Um, kind of to piggyback a little bit on what Rachel said, um, kinda it, my, my pushing, I asked her to reach out to Brandon, um, just because with me back in work and him having dealt with this, and I had talked to him at one of their council meetings about the best way to handle these kind of blighted properties. Um, I said, you know, hey, we're willing to take any information you give us. We're tackling this, and this is gonna be an ongoing issue. My goal for twenty twenty-five is to really push getting the town cleaned up and getting these properties backed up to where they need to be. Like, the, the town needs to, needs to look appealing. Like, we, we want everybody to be clean, and we're willing to help where we can. So, um, having an idea on the best way to go to tackle some of these properties and give some assistance to these people, has, he has been huge in helping us with that. Um, with that being said, you know, obviously, we were down there. I go down every single day to check this property to make sure that there's still being progress made, and every single day, they are making progress. Um, I know that we've laid out some pretty, pretty strict guidelines and some pretty hard deadlines, so we will see where we, where we land on that.
Yeah, we're working on the vehicles. The biggest thing right now is they need a, we need a wench to get them out, and so Brandon's gonna come down and do that. It's just gotta be when he's available to do it. I know he was down there last week on the motor home, but I'm not sure that, I haven't talked to him, so I'm not sure the outcome of that.
Yeah, as of last night, it was still there, but I know that the travel trailer is gone.
Yeah.
So that was moved.
Little progress.
The day after we were down there.
Uh, great. The one with no engine, no?
No, no.
Yeah, and I've tried to call the places that just like pick them up for like donations, but it needs to be flatbedded out, so.
Yeah. Other than that, that is all that I currently have. Any questions for me?
If there's such a thing, maybe I was putting out a, something on the city of Toledo page to say, hey, if you're looking for something to do today, let, we have a cleaning party.
We stay away from that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm like.
We could have Kyle.
If there, if there are people who want to help, they are more than welcome to come by City Hall and say, hey, you know, I'm happy to come help just, you know, and we can take their information and call them when we're gonna go out and work on a property. Um, but you know, there is a lot of, a lot of what-ifs and a lot of, we don't want people getting hurt out there helping us.
Right.
So.
Be on a volunteer basis.
Exactly, yeah.
At your honor is.
Yep, precisely.
So people might be willing to help.
Exactly. We can only help. It builds good community. Um, so we will go ahead then, and we'll go around. Do you have anything for us, Tony?
Um, I, I was at the South County, uh, Chamber of Commerce meeting this week, I think, um, and the fire chief, uh, was our speaker, and he brought up, um, the need for the maintenance for the fire hydrants, which you guys have already discussed, I guess, at that, and so I was curious about that. I didn't even realize we had as many downtown as we do. I guess they just kind of blend into the background. But that was, that was a question. So that's gonna be a public works.
Yes.
Fun, the issue.
Yeah.
They were, they were discussing that as part of the, that was very good talk, and I, I understand we have several, um, full-time people there now, and we've only had one full-time person there in the past, so that was good news, and I'm like, nice. Um, and quite a few new volunteers, too. So that's, that's good news.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, I had fun at the cleanup.
I mean, given what we.
We did a lot in a really fast amount of time, actually.
The clothes did not come in the house.
No, mine did not either.
I'd like to thank Rachel for what she's done the last two years. I know that I pushed really hard for us to bring the city out of a nosedive, and we could not have done it without you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm going into year three. Can you believe it? It's crazy.
That's better.
Survived.
You persevere.
I did, I did.
Yes.
I'm gonna make up today's birthday day, my sister's birthday, and two of my grandchildren.
And yet you just spent it with us.
I, I still as well, too.
Okay, yes. Rebecca?
Nothing to report, but I go right along with Eric, that he's wonderful to have Rachel, or she's at, no, what she does for us. I have something to report, but.
Perfect. All right, so moving right along, we will go into committee reports, planning commission.
Yes.
Maybe we'll postpone.
Do it, Brandon. Hi.
Bye.
Uh, we had a planning commission meeting last week, and, uh, some of the topics, we, we pretty much closed up the housing portion of our land use code for the master plan. And then we, um, started discussing the fact that we have no real business codes that deal with, uh, the presenting of your business to the public. Uh, there was some discussion with regard to setting some guidelines, just like we did in the design features for the new homes coming in, uh, so that signage and appearance and maintenance, uh, were addressed uh, for our local businesses. Um, and I think that was probably pretty much of our meeting, even though it lasted quite a bit of time, because we went through Todd's final uh, draft of the housing element, and we were pretty happy with that. Um, Rachel and I and Cindy, uh, attended the school board meeting, uh, last week. And I think there was some very positive communication that came out of that meeting. Uh, we have a school board member with us today. And I, I believe they've been given most of the information that perhaps was lacking. Um, and while it's in their court, after what they choose to pursue, uh, I got the hint that they would be wanting to participate, uh, and that they might wanna get together with the chief of the fire district as well.
I spoke to him today. He was gonna try to be here, but I'll update him.
Um, I attended the two-and-a-half-hour short course planning class today. I'll have my certificate when they attended to me. I was, I was actually pleased to note that most of our planning commissioners did probably, there's a lot of review for them, because Todd has been so instrumental in educating us uh, along the planning guidelines area. Um, the only question I came away with was with regards to a master shoreline plan. Does the city have one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I haven't seen that. Um, so I believe that it's a crucial, any question? The, uh, I'll make a comment, the, the residential building standards are fantastic, and the thing I like most about them, I, I can't wait till everybody gets to see them, um, is that they are not obnoxious. They, they really are, you know, you don't have to go very far out of your way. It's not, you know, it's not crazy, you know, seventeen inches of gingerbread, four inches tall, and, you know, it's nothing like that. It's just you have to have a ton of things, and, and that's why kind of thought that maybe we could do the same thing for businesses, something that's not in their face, and, and hopefully the businesses can, can be a part of that as well, so.
Yeah, we should probably start putting stuff out. I think Kyle was the one that made the comment, putting it out on Facebook when there's zoning changes being made. Was that you? I think that's a good idea. Like, hey, we are talking about zoning. For those of you that are interested, please join, because a lot of people just either are unaware, but I think putting out on Facebook's a good idea.
I, I can tell you, I've looked at the social media, and I know there's at least four or five people that claim that they're gonna be at every city. Yes, I think the business will be a lot more important as we grow the business areas, since that's definitely something you're interested in.
Yeah.
So the other cities and stuff, is that something, if they have those requirements, is that something you can access? So that we have some kind of framework.
Reference to.
Yeah.
Todd, Todd does a pretty good job, because he worked for so many other cities and has in the past, that have a lot of things to draw on when we start asking questions on how we'd like to frame something. You know, we're pretty much a Fourth Amendment city. And, and so you don't wanna be onerous. You don't wanna make the, the homeowner or the builder or somebody feel like they've walked right into an HOA's situation, but you do wanna have certain guidelines so that you're not doing cookie cutter houses or businesses at the same time. That is the sort of mitigating uh, the process so that everyone feels like they walked away happy, which is hard to do.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right, and then we will go ahead and move on from there to park board. We don't have, I know, um, continued cleanup efforts are, are ongoing at the park. Um, trying to get the, the down trees there, so we can get the park back open and, and operating again. Um, other than that, I don't know that there's a whole lot else.
Park board meeting did not happen because there was a.
Forum, okay.
All right. So yeah, reminding people on all the committees to call in or email in if they're not gonna be here, yeah, because we still gotta pay draft to come down and.
Okay. All right, so we will go ahead and move on from there. No public hearing or special presentation this evening. Is there any?
Park board, for sure.
Park porch is full now.
Okay.
Are we, are we down one?
It does sound like one is leaving.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, yeah, and we'll be on the hunt for another park board member. Is there any public comment on our agenda items? Yes.
I will, we're, um, first, the sort of problematic property owner thing. Do you guys know if they would be open to a community cleanup day thing? One of those, it's a sensitive subject for some owners, and they kind of, we live in an area that people want to handle their own things sometimes, but.
No, this person would definitely be open to it. Um, if you would like to rally it, um, I just, I don't.
I know that's, it's something that the city doesn't want to do, but if there was a community rally around it, that you guys were involved in maybe on your personal capacities.
Yeah.
I'd hope they did join on that.
Yeah.
It's just, it has somebody sort of approached the subject of like, would you be open to twenty people showing up for a day?
No, they, they totally would, and we did consider, like, putting it out on Facebook and kind of asking, because there's so many people that would like to see the property cleaned up. It is a lot of work, and it did take a dump truck, and it is gonna take a flatbed to get a lot out, but, um, it was just easier for us to kind of go out than stir Facebook up, yeah.
The pot is hot, you're not coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. Um, part-time billing clerk, we had that second call for a while. Was it just not a good fit? Did it just not work out?
Um, yeah.
I did note for Steve, definitely just poacher sign codes from Shadless. They are very short up with their sign codes up there, and Todd is very familiar with them, particularly.
We grabbed clammas, because he just did clammas, yeah.
And then lastly, I had talked to Rachel a little bit about the gravel parking lot. Um, can we get a sign there eventually that clearly marks it as a public parking lot? Just because I think that a lot of people, I know that I've assumed that it is privately owned this whole time. I didn't realize that technically, if you want to, you can park there.
It's a really dangerous pull in and out.
Well, and I just, there's the, the, the church that's at the corner, and we're supposed to have public parking there. It looks like we've been doing gravel there twice a year.
It does have a sign that says, public parking Monday through Friday on the Presbyterian.
Do we use it?
I, I don't know. Some people park in there, it looks like.
But my thing is like, we have one sign right now that shows everybody public parking at the launch. But I don't think that there's any other sign that says like, hey, if you turn off, there's a lot more public parking over there for you.
That's perfect here as well. So.
Just a couple of signs that say there's more parking there than what you see as you're passing through.
I think we have someone in PD, too.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. All right, any other comments? All right, we will go ahead and jump into new business. First up is ordinance number eight-one-six, and ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington, establishing a reduced water rate program for low-income residents and providing for survivability and establishing an effective date.
Yay.
I would happily, uh, move that we accept ordinance eight-one-six.
I'll second it.
All right, it has been moved by Eric and seconded by Jamie. We'll open it up for discussion.
Really glad to get here.
Yes, this has been eight months. We've been trying to nail this down.
Yeah.
Been a year, if you count the math.
Yes. Yes. And a lot of headache.
So, uh, just to let everybody know, we've, we are, it's a, it's a lower water use, and, um, and then there's income requirement, income requirement, and I was able to get to my goal of, um, sub a hundred dollars with tax a month.
Yeah, there's a lot of older residents that live alone, that don't use a lot of water, and they're paying, or they were paying the base rate um, as, as a household using eight thousand gallons, and a lot of people are on a fixed income. They can't afford it. So this is, it took so long because we had to get the attorney's thumbs up to make sure all of our boxes were checked on this one.
And we have about twenty to twenty-five residents that could potentially qualify for it.
And thank you for staying on top of them to, uh, get this done.
Yes.
See, I'd like to comment on the exceptions, if I could find them, but again, anybody know what page they're on?
Uh, page two.
Oh, good.
Yes.
My pages are numbered.
Well, it's section number three, section number three.
It's section four, exception of the teaching.
Yeah, right below section three.
Bottom half of a page.
Yeah.
So, for number, sorry, you go, okay.
Right there on page two. Okay, so, um, I'm wondering why, if you qualify for federal subsidy, why you're eliminated from this? Because if you're qualified for that, that means you're pretty poor, and that's why you qualify. If you're qualified for that, that means you're pretty poor and that's why you qualify for it. And so why are we excluding them?
Uh, cuz they're already getting free housing and they're getting all different kinds of benefits, we're looking more to do this for people that are on social security. Um, not people that are receiving full benefits from the federal, because if you're on federal's like subsidized, they're paying your power. They're paying a bunch of other things, plus you're getting food stamps, you're getting all these other benefits. I'd like to be able to, and I'd like to be able to help the retired community.
I assume they're indirectly, probably indirectly already paying for your water.
Pretty much.
Cuz we do have some people who are.
They do, we do get checks for them, yeah. And that was actually recommended from Marissa, from our attorney.
Okay, they're getting free housing. Uh, they are required to pay at least thirty percent of their income.
Okay, that's just, this is kind of what Eric and I landed on, this is what the attorneys went with. I think, um, there's a lot of retired people here that are on a fixed income and they're not getting any help. They're on social security and this is one way that we can help them, that's why we stuck with that.
Okay, just voicing my opinion.
Just that one? Jamie?
Yes.
Alright, we'll go ahead and poll through, all those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will go ahead and. Move on to ordinance number eight one seven, and ordinance to reduce misuse of the nine one one emergency call system and improper use of the emergency communication system.
I'll move that we approve ordinance eight one seven.
Then move by Rebecca and seconded by Tony, we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion. And it pretty much cut and dry, like.
Pretty much. It really is, it's needed and I'm not sure, um, if we can do one reading of this, it's somewhat, uh. I guess it's not necessarily an emergency, but it's extremely needed by a wind law police department at this time. So that's something that you could, you could push on to into one reading.
I'm like, and, and I'm happy for it to be one, again, because it is cut and dry, are we, or is everybody okay with doing this as one time reading?
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, it's not, it's not money related, it's.
Perfect. Alright, well, I will go ahead and call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries, perfect. So, next up on our list, resolution number three one zero eight, a resolution authorizing a salary adjustment for employee Carly Jones. Retroactive as of January first, twenty twenty-five, and establishing her new wage for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
I'm not much, but we accept the resolution three one zero eight.
Alright, it's been moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy, we'll open it up for discussion, um, I know I wanna say that. She is worth every penny that we pay for her and she really has grabbed hold and is diving in literally with both feet. Um, to learn as much as she can and she's always willing to go above and beyond.
Yeah, she's done a really good job and even with, you know, having the other utilities girl, there was the whole tier system that. Wasn't getting updated and didn't get done and then Carly started billing and so she came in basically all weekend just to get. You know, things updated, she's done a really good job, really own, own her position.
Yes, she has.
I have, I have no issue with that, what I do have issue with is that. We don't see what the increase was. Is there a percentage, is there a dollar amount, it's just the amount that she's going to. We don't see where, where did.
Oh, it went up, it went up a dollar twenty, I think, cuz she, yeah, I mean, it was, it was in the last budget. It went up a dollar, a dollar twenty.
I know. That's twenty-two fifty and yeah, she was at twenty-one.
Twenty.
Something, twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, in the future, I think we should.
Yeah, that.
Putting where it was going.
Yeah.
And.
Even if it's informational, if you don't wanna put it in the, you know, if you don't wanna put it in the resolution, you could just put it as a. Bendum.
Yeah. That works. Anything else?
Alright, I'll go and call for the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Next thing on the list is the park post contract, everybody had a chance to look it over, correct? Okay. I would entertain a motion on that one too, the weekend discussion.
Jamie, you're gonna have to do this one.
Make an emotion on this one.
Why not?
Because I will vote to reject it.
Well, I'm making a motion for the sake of discussion that we accept the city of Toledo personal service agreement for the party.
Thank you, Rebecca, can I get a second? Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
And moved by Rebecca and seconded by Eric, I will go and open it up for discussion now, and go.
Okay, and I will reiterate my objection to this as being a barter service. That we are not recording.
So I did provide stuff from the IRS, I did speak to someone.
That is a fringe benefit thing, that's not the same. You, you pointed out fringe benefit, this is not a fringe benefit, because fringe benefits are for employees. He's not an employee.
But it would still be considered a fr- fr- what, what else would it be considered, I guess?
It's a barter agreement.
Okay, I can look, but, uh.
For now and forever. If you happen to bring it. I did not, because I've done, what, three, four objections on this, I figure if you guys. Want to ensure that you're doing it the correct way, you guys should look it up and cover that base, but.
We also have our attorney in, in counsel saying that we were good, so I think we're covered.
I know, and I argued until I was gavelled down.
Yeah, I can look at. I won.
Uh, and Chris, the auditor's office had any thing to say on any of that either?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, he is, he is not an employment attorney.
He's a city attorney, that's, I mean, he does all of our.
He's a city attorney, he is not an employment attorney, that's a specialty. And you have to have that knowledge and that education. And considering I worked for L and I and employment security, I know about barter agreements and the taxation.
And what publication on from the IRS is it in? What would it be under? Cuz they come out with all these publications, this one publication fifteen.
So go to the IRS and put in barter agreement.
But, that's what print. I can look, but, I mean, you guys still can call about, but.
Exactly.
I was like, doesn't anybody else have discussion on it?
Well, so I was reading the lodging on your business premises on page seventeen. I guess that's a good thing I'm not a tax person.
Yes.
This looks like.
Not the same thing, because that would be for an employee, which he is not. Are you, and I still like you.
I enjoy this, I enjoy this every year.
He comes just.
And see, I already do. We are very good working.
I just get on the fact that's the requirement of, uh, I guess it's not employment, which is what just, what you're saying is this doesn't work because it's not employment.
Yeah, it's, it's a barter contract. And barter contracts are completely different and they are reportable by both parties.
Won't you just amend the contract to state if, if it needs to be reported through a barter contract that we will do that? Section in there.
We've already amended this contract to try to backdoor it and it's still.
Well, this is a whole new contract though.
I know, but it was, it was amended last year.
Yeah.
To say, oh, well, let's. Do this it.
Well, it's cuz council agreed that they were just gonna go with what Jim said, being our attorney.
I know. I'm just saying that if there's any repercussions or any, uh, lawsuits or anything like that. Council is responsible.
Ninety-nine B?
Ten ninety-nine B.
I don't need it right now, I don't care.
Any other of this stuff?
No, that's a ten ninety-nine, that's reporting it on a ten ninety-nine.
Just a curve for barter exchange.
Yeah, it's saying that you have to use a form ten ninety-nine B, I can look, but yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 How you doing? Um, if we have our attorney's blessings, I feel a little bit better about that. But if it's something that we should be reporting and we're not.
If it's something that needs to be reported, I will look into it and make sure it gets reported, yeah, I'm not gonna not do it if it's brought to my attention, but.
Okay, but here's the reporting.
Hold on, hold on, I'm waiting for Tony.
Okay.
Still say I don't know.
You can abstain.
You can abstain.
I, as I'm new to this particular item, I feel better researching it just so plus more.
I scared her.
You did, alright, all opposed?
Aye, nay?
Alright, and then we've got Tony is abstaining.
And thank you for looking into that then, a little more.
I will.
But that, that does.
Like to miss, uh, I don't, you don't like to get hit on audits, so.
Yeah, and it's a ten ninety-nine, if it's as simple as a ten ninety-nine, it's.
Well, that's, that's the issue there is, yes, there should be a ten eighty-nine B issued. Because it's a barter contract and he has to report the income. However, we also have to claim the revenue that we are getting from free service. So it's match, match.
I'll look into it.
With that, it does indeed pass, looks to be had a majority vote. So we will move into the next one, which is the, um, contract for Jade. That is the Public Works, I believe, assistant contract.
Yeah, it's.
I would entertain a motion on that one as well.
I'll make my own, obviously, except for the contract for, uh, Public Works assistant.
I'll second it, I can't find it, but it's.
And then by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie, let's go and open it up for discussion. Has anybody seen anything that backed out on, on his contract?
Yes, that's why I'm trying to find it. Um, there is a thing where he gets a dollar increase for.
Water cert.
And then.
And then eighty cents.
And then eight cents for.
Could be a dollar and a dollar.
But, no, the, the issue is, it's the same. Thing.
No, one of them is water and one of them is sewer.
One of them is water and.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, wat- water cert is the dollar an hour and then wastewater, which would be sewer.
Oh.
The water cert and the wastewater.
Yep.
Yeah, that's where I went, what, you just said a dollar and then you said eighty cents, so.
No.
You just keep adding on to that or?
And that kinda keeps in line. And that keeps in line that we, uh, that we are compensating John for having a cert experience, we kind of want his pay, we use him as a reason of us.
Okay, the question is. Uh, cuz he's supposed to get certified every year, correct, or not?
John's is.
No, this is just obtaining it.
Okay.
But every three years I get.
This is for Jay.
This is for Jay, not John.
Yes.
And Jay's in the process of getting certified to become a full blown.
Right, but it was my understanding they had to recertify every year.
They do.
And so, is he getting a dollar or eighty cents or a dollar eighty every year?
No, it'll be done in budget, this was already put in budget, yeah, this is just his employment contract now.
This is just for him obtain, that's just for him obtaining his certifications, it's not the real.
I believe he's being held up by routine whatever.
He's being actually held up by ecology.
By ecology.
Yeah, they are.
Exhausted tests, yeah.
For water, it's for water or for?
Uh, water first and wastewater second, um, but yeah, I know that there was a bit of a backlog. Um, and she was very clear about that when I was, I was down meeting with them one day and they, you know, they had just spoken with her and she said that was, you know, she backlogged, they're just her for that department. And they're at the end of the cycle where everybody's gotta get their CE done.
Yeah, they're three year, yeah, that's why it's a three year, um, three year retest because they have, they have, they have. Annual or every year they have to do a continuing education, but then they recertify every three years.
Yep.
And for some reason, they certify everybody on the same year, which.
Yeah. Then it makes them.
If I hit that up, it might work better, but.
I did just notice that item five has a dollar an hour for the water cert and eighty cents for wastewater and item twelve under training certification is. Wastewater at the dollar and water.
Oh, I'll flip that second one, yeah. So you were right, Jamie. I'll give you that one, I'm not giving you the barter contract though.
Yeah, way to go Rebecca.
My fault for continuing to mess with her while she was trying to, I kept ripping her up. Uh, is there any further discussion on this, or call for a vote?
Five and twelve.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carries. So we will move on to the next one, which is the one oh two Calaway easement agreement, do you wanna speak on that?
Oh, yeah, so, um. We've got the Bush, um, conditional use permit that's in place, um, the Morgan. Art studio, is that what it's called? Arts center, whatever, they're moving, yeah, they're, they're moving in over there, um, I did. Look through the previous tenants and there was an easement agreement in there, um, coming up with what. Kyle has, um, kinda pointed out, this might need to be changed a little bit. Um, since that is gonna be their main parking area, I understand it's. Public parking, um, but the city I feel really needs to protect itself, it's gonna be ninety percent. There are people coming in and out, um, it's gonna be ninety percent, they're wearing tear on. The, you know, the gravel, um, and I feel like. Someone falls on the street, it's city, but you know, that little easement right there, I think we should have, we should be covered, um, through general liability and there was something. Similar in place for the previous owner, um, that just stated they did have to have, um. Liability that, um, named the city for that area, so that's kind of what this is. Um, if we are gonna put a public parking out there, maybe we could do fifty percent in maintenance, but. We don't want them tearing up our easement and then, you know, two years from now, we have to go in cuz Tuesday's is coming and we have huge problems.
Our agreement, our agreement with the NAPA store is that they provide the gravel, we provide the dozer. So we, Public Works does the, you know, it's kind of, that's because we use it, it's, they own the, they own that, that strip. But we use it.
I thought we.
No.
I just had him, you know, gravel in there, but it's.
Could you identify exactly what you're talking about?
Oh, it's the Bushland property, it's the, the old Bonanza barbecue, you know where the jail's at? So there's that alley that goes to the jail and they use that for parking, but it's technically a city easement, it was gifted to us years ago. Um, yeah, it's an extension of Third Street, but it was, there was like, there, it was gifted to us through. Some, I guess, older family in Toledo, but anyways, it's city property. Um, and so in order for them to have parking for their business, they're gonna be using that, so it is. City public parking, which I don't know if there's any kind of conflict there, but if they're gonna be using that for. Their business and it's gonna be mostly used by their business.
The conflict I see is that we're, we're not requiring the same thing from the Mexican restaurant, we're not requiring the same thing from Dog's and those are both using public land for. More, a city land for the bulk, if not, the bulk of their parking.
And I did, it was.
Yeah, they use the boat launch, well.
But that was something that too had been tossed around.
Parking she uses, energy.
Yeah, and I know as far as like the boat launch parking, um, I had kinda talked to her on Public Works and I think we had, it was during a meeting we had had, but. Was potentially making that for especially, you know, the ones that aren't paying to use the boat launch, um, making that. Paid parking during the day and so that would also be something that would be posted up there that it is. You know, if you're going, you, you pay to park here, so if you're using the restaurant, you can either pay and park here. Or you're gonna need to use street parking or use that parking, yep. Yeah, I thought, and that, again, it's another revenue source. So, things to kick around.
Can they use? I mean, give them. Five spaces along the building.
I'm just looking for fair, you know, if we're charging, you know, if we're charging him, but we're not charging Donna, we're not.
Well, we're not charging, we're just expecting them, I think, to clean up.
The, the, having to carry. To carry the insurance on it, maintaining it is.
Well, it's, it's their insurance, there's no extra additional cost for their insurance, it's just them naming us as an additional insured. Yeah, we're not requiring them to carry anything additional, it's just, you know, if one of our people falls, getting into the car, they're not gonna come after the city if they were there for the art studio. Um, again, I know. If someone was parked on the street at Donna's, it'd be a little bit different, but if they were on her sidewalk, you know what I mean, or in front of anyone's, then they're gonna go after the.
They're gonna go after the city.
And there's some really. Delineated parking, it's just.
It's just a lot. Yeah, and so and then it also does say, cuz I know they planned on doing some, um, some cheese days stuck there, but it, it does say that if they're gonna use it for that. We're not granting them ownership of the, um, the parking lot, it's not, you know, doing anything like that, it's just. And again, I can. I can reword it to say, you know, they, they pay for the gravel and we do the work, that's, that's fine too, I just don't. Wanna. Have it on the city where. We're stuck maintaining that before cheese days every year cuz gravel is expensive.
Well, and additionally, I'm concerned that. That we're making exceptions and exceptions and exceptions and pretty soon.
Yeah, it's a conditional use permit, I mean, they, they did, they did their due diligence and they followed all the steps and they took it to planning and so. I mean, there's exceptions that are. You know, they should be made and they go in front of planning and. And councils.
And I don't feel the parking as an exception because you could park there to go to Donna's place.
Right.
Check your mail, I mean, it's just, it's city.
Parking.
Parking, especially if we put a sign up, which is great, which I do like that idea.
Yeah, and I think that's probably something better, pu- public parking up and then just say, you know, hey. Pay for the gravel and we'll do the maintenance when needed or before cheese days or whatever, and that way. It is more of a. You know, it's still public parking. So.
And that. Sorry to chime in here, my one comment to Rachel about it really was. Making sure that they don't charge for parking.
Correct.
It's still a public parking.
Correct.
Just that your business is closest and needs it and. On that point too, it sounds like there is precedent, there was a lease there for an easement there previously.
Um, it was an extension of Third Street and then there was some like, I, I say the D, it was like. An old, old D, like nineteen thirty, but it was from Kellogg Way. I'm not really sure what that was, it was really hard to read, but yeah, it was gifted to us. And the only reason I knew was because we had just done that alley vacation or that the vacate, and so. I had all the, the documents and so that's. I, we know it's city property, it's not. It's not the state's property, but.
And I know that this is a huge dream, but you know, eventually down the line it'd be nice to have it paid to cut down the dust on it, but I understand that we. Don't have a million dollars to pay the city.
And to make it safe to get out of it, and I don't know how you pull that off.
That's those little beers.
That's a crazy, yeah.
You know, now, now that you have to come to a stop, maybe people aren't gonna be doing a full forty-five down the hill, in which case, you're toast. You can't see them, you already have a way out. Yeah, Sydney and I, yeah, I went to. Walked the barbecue Bonanza, I think twice and we, it's a run across the street and hope that you don't die.
Yeah.
Well, additionally, um, the concern is. Would they be preventing people from parking there?
No, and that's, and that, you know, that's. Kind of what Kyle and I were talking about, is it's still gonna be public parking. Um, they're not able to just take over that space for cheese days or any events, they can't, you know. Charge for parking, yeah, it's not, it's not their space. Um, and it even says in here that, and I don't remember how it's worded, but it basically, this in no way grants them. Any kind of authority over the, the.
This is just like Donna's, she's a zero lot line. And then, and the corner business, they're both, they're all zero lot line, well, not the corner one, he actually has some parking spot, but. Donna has two spots for her, for her rentals in the back. And other than that, she's zero lot line, you use public land to, to go to Donna's. Or walk. So, it's, it is no different.
Any further discuss? We didn't get a motion. Can I get a motion on that? It's, it's the Kellogg Way easement agreement.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we. Approve the one oh two Kellogg Way. I'll second it. We're just really doming out on spot tonight, aren't we?
From parts and then Bushlands.
Equipment.
Because it is our property.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's public parking.
A little confused with the, behind the Oregon Art Center. Which is the new building?
No, 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 the, the Bushland, we just did that conditional use permit over at the old barbecue.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
We do need that amended then.
Well, no, we, yeah, it's.
Yeah, cuz that's not in here, right?
Yeah, correct.
So we do need an amended motion.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement for the use of the Toledo East. And for business parking as long as item four maintenance obligations is amended to remove that. There are no responsibility for maintenance.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Right, then the amended motion was made by Rebecca and seconded by Tony, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I, I would strictly limit how you rework that. So that's all we're doing.
Yeah, I will.
Um, so we will move on to the next one, which is the Vision Server contracts, um, I would entertain a motion on that one as well.
I make motion that we accept the vision server contract.
I'll second that.
Moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca and we'll open it up for any discussion.
So what is the vision server?
So, um, this is basically, we've already moved all of our software to the cloud, but now we're gonna move our shared drive to the cloud. Um, which would prevent. Our oops that we had in twenty. Four?
It was the end of twenty-three, it was like the first.
Yeah, so our server went down and we had to drive out to.
Eastern Washington.
Yeah, yeah, Kennewick to have them update our, um. Our server, so basically this will put that all on the cloud, um, it puts all of our shared files on the cloud. And Dalton's gonna come up, come out here and hook us all up with the one point drive, which I don't know a lot about it, but. Um. It'll allow us to. Keep that on. The, um, the cloud, but I've got folders that need to be locked down, I've got payroll folders, I've got police department files. Stuff like that, that needs to be locked down, that shouldn't, that can't be on a shared drive. Um, and so. Keeping the two separate, like we were having two. Of the, what are those things called? The, the little like.
Thumb drives.
Yeah, like a thumb drive, but a big one, and you're, technically, we're supposed to have them at two different locations. But again, it's. There's. Classified information I can't put on there, so our server, yeah, so it doesn't have all the information that we need, so. It's gonna allow us to put everything in the cloud and lock it down.
And this includes.
No new computers.
No new computer.
It's just serving these computers.
Yeah, it's hooking us up on the cloud, it's all the work that they have to do, um. We've only got four computers.
And this is, so this includes Microsoft.
Correct.
With Microsoft suite.
Yeah.
They're, they're moving back to a managed service for Microsoft.
Yeah, so there's a lot of stuff they can't do when we manage our own. Microsoft account, so like when I was in Mexico and I couldn't get into my computer, cuz they don't have access to. Our backend or whatever it is, they, they can't, couldn't help me.
So the, um. Public Works doesn't need this?
They do not need this, no, they will need, um, Microsoft, correct? Yeah, they've already got it, so they, yeah, they don't need all of our. Office files.
No, no cloud base for them, cuz all their stuff will be saved through I works.
Through I works, yeah, they're moving everything to I works.
And they, yeah, they use Excel to, to submit. To the state, so. I can have that, that is kind of a backup as well.
Any other questions?
And then the recurring fee is just that six fifty-two, the eight eighty is the setup, so.
Alright, we will go ahead and call for a vote.
So I see that they reduced. From five to four. But this stays the same, why does this stay the same?
Um, I don't know that it stays the same, I just know the quote that he sent me over, it had the five computers. So I just put four there and one of those includes my laptop and I probably won't even have my laptop hooked up to the, the shared drive.
So the eight eighty is to migrate our server.
Correct.
And the six fifty-two is for four seats of Microsoft.
And all, yeah, and. And the eight eighty includes him actually coming out here and doing the work.
And that's a one time, and then the Microsoft is an annual.
So the annual recurring amount. For twenty twenty-six is the eight eighty-five or less than?
Six fifty-two.
Okay, I think that's what Jamie's asking about. And says twenty twenty-six, so we have to change that to six. So we'll accept the agreement as long as the, the annual recurring amount is.
Go ahead and call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And carries? Last on the new business is the Donna's Place Liquor License Renewal, would entertain a motion on that?
I don't know, should we?
Can I get a second on? What? Jamie and seconded by Tony, any discussion on this?
Rachel?
Yes.
Check on them to see if they've had any. Police issues.
Yeah, they haven't. Nothing. Nothing out of ordinary. Just the cheese day stuffles. Spousals, scuffles.
If there isn't some fun at cheese days, is it really cheese days? Alright, I will go ahead and call for the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries, no unfinished business, so we'll go ahead and jump into our other business. Um, so we did have a section on here regarding comp plan update, um, impact meeting with the school district. We'll have you come on up here and see, Jamie, for the record.
It's Alan Hutchinson. I'm a representative for District Five for the School Board Directors, uh. The newest school board director, so bear with me a little bit here, uh. First off, I wanted to say thank you for bringing it to our attention again, uh, that we. Look at this exercise tax and, or, or. Impact fee, sorry, uh, to, uh, if we wanna actually claim those dollars, if, if they are going to be assessed on new buildings. Uh, we understand that there is. Over three hundred new houses that are gonna be coming into our new district, or in our district over the next. Couple of years and. About a hundred this year, so, uh, or more than a hundred this year. That could bring upwards of three hundred students to our school. Uh, we do understand that impact in. Uh, the school board has instructed Brennan and Janaya are, uh. Financial admin at the district office to work with the city to, uh, come up with a, uh. A value that makes sense and to make sure that we're meeting our comp. Uh, I did bring our comp plan from. Our, our, sorry, our capital facilities plan. From twenty twenty-two, then when, when we put that together, and I wanted to share a little bit about that. Um, mainly from a growth standpoint, I just wanted to note that we are. On chart with where we were expecting, uh, for twenty twenty-five, twenty, or twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We were looking at about nine hundred and nineteen students, uh, being our expected numbers. Uh, as of our last board meeting, we're at nine oh four. Which is a little bit higher than we were expecting at this point in the year, so.
Is that still loaded down low on first, second, third grade now?
In regard to first, second is very loaded heavily, uh. Being that we have a lot of new families that are moving in, so they're bringing in a lot of young. Uh, children with them, which is great for, for our community and, and it's. It's great for growth in general, uh, we have a lot of executive type people, myself included, I'm a. Executive Director for a nonprofit, so. Toledo brought me here because of the fiber internet that it offers in a small town field, I'll keep it that way, right, so, uh. I did wanna share, uh, that we do have our budget review, uh, during the June, July. And August months as our financial, our, our. Our budget runs from September one to August thirty-first, so normally in December, it's a little bit relaxed. Because a lot of staff members take vacation and, and so during our December meeting, we had Janaya, our financial, uh, manager. Her business manager, uh, on vacation, it was a planned vacation, so we knew she wasn't gonna be there at the board meeting. Then Brennan, our school district, her superintendent was in the hospital sick, uh, during the board meeting, so it was very. Yeah, it was not, not very well attended from a, from an admin standpoint, so, uh, we couldn't answer as many questions as we wanted to, but Jamie, we wanted to address. Some concerns that you had, uh, so I wanted to show from. I have slides, I think, the are on board docs, I know, right, these are all slides, right, uh. These are all available on board docs on the website for Toledo School District, so if you go to the school district website, underneath Toledo School Board. You can click on board docs, uh, these are public documents that are available and posted with every agenda. So if we go under agenda, go to the financial report, these are part of that, uh. These are from our last board meeting, so, uh, one of the questions was how we were doing financially, right, and. Uh, I just wanted to show kind of our fund balance history, so this is our fund balance history and. I'm gonna pass it around and then I'm gonna ask you guys to. Uh, flip pages as we go, but, uh, you'll notice in twenty twenty, uh, we had a huge spike in funding. We had a lot of fun there, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we had a bunch of money coming in, uh, so we had. Uh, fu- funds come in from local area assistance. Uh, we also had funds from Esser Funding that was due COVID, that was. Government friends, and we were doing really well with our budgets. During that time, we made some hirings that helped with, uh, social and emotional health within the students and. Benefited from those. Extra grant money, uh. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we lost those funding. But chose to keep those people on, uh, because we were able to keep the balance. A little high as we were going through, but then we lost our LEA funds. Uh, and then that dropped it even more, so then we moved, uh, one of the social interventionists to be a. Full-time employee at the middle school, or at the elementary school. And the, uh. Behavioral interventionist to be a social, uh. Uh, interventionist at the, at the middle school, part-time. So, uh, we're continuing to work through the budget, uh, we have a budget, a monthly budget review meeting every, uh. Every month as part of our board meeting, normally, uh, Janaya is there to give a report, so, uh. This is what one of those reports looks like, um. Know that. Funding at the, at the school district level is based on state funding, majority of it is. Uh, we have a fourteen point six million dollar budget for the year of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, only one point. What's it, one point eight four? It's one point four five million comes from a total of levies and other local funding mechanisms. We do have the bonds that, that go through getting passed or, or fails every so often, uh, but. Uh, just to, just to let you guys know more about it, we have seen an increase of eight and a half percent of students this year. Which was way higher than what we were expected of five percent and. This, uh, the state doesn't give us our funding until they reassess those numbers. On our budgeted numbers in January and February, so we'll start to see the, the back pay from. The early part of the school year. Coming into the next year, uh. So notable funding changes, uh, revenue. Uh, we saw Esser Funds in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, uh, which were due to try to. Uh, we saw S R funds in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, uh, which were due to try to reduce, uh. Inflation costs and, uh. And combat some other cost raises, uh, then the local effort assistance funding, uh, ran out for, uh, twenty. Or they, we lost them in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four season because, uh, Toledo is considered a. Uh, we're property-rich district but lacks in large industrial base, so. Uh, if we could get more industrial buildings into into Toledo to help kind of offset the the homeowner tax basis. Uh, for our taxpayers, that would be helpful, uh, for the school district. Uh, and then we had some expenditure increases, so, uh, we had a property and liability insurance went up over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In twenty twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Huge amount. You guys obviously have seen that too. Uh, utilities also saw a rise and then, uh, materials, supplies and operational costs have just gotten more expensive as. Uh, as we've all expected or experienced in our lives, right? We implemented some cost savings to help offset those, so we implemented a one-tier busing system instead of a. A two-tier busing system with the bus drivers driving two different, uh, or two times the same route. Uh, which allowed us to get our start times for schools all at one time or or within ten minutes of each other. We've also have had attrition of staff positions that were very well-tenured. And now we have some newer employees that are taking those spots, so, uh, they don't cost as much and and we still benefit from them. Uh, we do have the press, uh, principal vacancy that was filled with super or with the dean of. Students and superintendents, this is both at the, uh, middle school and at the elementary school, so we have the dean of students at both schools now. That help, uh, Brennan and, oh, I'm I'm missing her name right now for the middle school.
The little blonde girl.
Yeah. But, uh, the the whole point is that. The middle school principal that was there last year is now, uh, still a principal in action. But she's managing more of the reporting and the the inspecting of the teaching and seeing how everything's being done, so. The dean of students at the middle school has been really well received and we would hate to see him go up to the high school as, uh, principal next year, but we'll see. And then we've also, uh, changed the supply order, uh, processes and and made it. So we can choose cheaper options throughout the school district. A couple of notes, uh, from a from the audits perspective, because that's important for everybody that runs our school district. Uh, we do an audit every two years on all of our, uh, accountabilities. So we want to make sure that we're accountable for all of our expenditures and our revenue and and making sure it's going to where it's supposed to. We also do an audit each year, uh, by the state auditor's office and our financial statements go through an extensive four-week audit. Uh, during that time, they focus on one of the three or one to three federal brand. The twenty twenty-four audit was considered. Uh, or the twenty twenty-four audit considered a single audit and an accountability audit and examined the school's financials. Dating back to twenty twenty-one, so we wanted to make sure that we were fully in compliance and and covered all of our bases. Twenty-three and twenty-four were complete, uh, completed, were successfully, uh, or were both completed successfully as clean audits. With no findings or actions needed. Uh, there was a note that we do need to reach our fund balance. Uh, mandate that the board has set of three and a half percent, uh, we would like to see that even higher, uh, but our minimum is that three and a half percent. And then I wanted to show a graph here, so the the last two pages here is our, uh, general fund expenditures. And what we're spending it on and then our general fund revenue for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and just note that. The majority of our expenditures are on general education. The other big line item there is facilities. Uh, we do have aging schools, right, and and as that. Uh, as part of that, we are looking into the impact fees to, uh, make sure that we are. Getting our new revenue, but understanding the limitations of impact fees is is one of those things that that the board didn't quite understand all fully. And, uh, a few of the board members also, uh, had thought that we already had impact fees being assessed on new buildings. So, uh, we will be working with Brennan and the the district office to make sure that.
I brought that to your house attention two and a half years.
That was before my time there. So I appreciate it, but yeah, uh, and and myself as a licensed engineer in Washington, I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements. That we need to from a from a legal standing or standpoint, a building standpoint and, uh, a planning standpoint, right? We need to figure out where and how are we gonna build a new school if we need to build a new school, especially with. Large developments coming to the city.
And bringing smaller kids. I know the elementary school is. Bumpy at the seams.
Yeah, so actually, uh, so part of our capital facilities plan, and I I don't know, uh, Eric, were you on that committee, the community action committee? I know, uh, Steve was, um, when and I was as well as a community member at that time, which is one of the reasons why. Decided to run for board member, um. We have. On this sheet of our, uh, capital facilities plan, a list of of. How much our deficit in usable spaces at the school district. In twenty twenty-four. Twenty-five, we had, uh, capacity at our elementary school of three hundred and forty-six. Our current full-time. Education count at the elementary school, it's four hundred and so four hundred. Four hundred and thirty-nine at the elementary school right now.
Good thing they're small.
Yeah. In that process, we actually have to hire another employee for the K one, two, three, uh, area of the school. Because we're over our headcount, uh, we need to meet that and as as we get reallocated adjustments from the state. That'll make that a lot easier to to make that higher and meet our goals for the budget year after year. At the middle school, uh, we have a permanent capacity of two hundred and forty-six. We have a hundred, a hundred and eighty-eight. Uh, which is good, but the middle school itself is, uh. Oh, how do I say this? No, well, yes, it is old, but, um, it's just not laid out in a way that is. Functional for new learning methods or methods that need to move students around, uh, easily. And, uh, teach all of the curriculum that we need. Uh, we we know that we have a large amount of spent kids that. That are special education kids that need need extra help. We have, uh, in, uh, vocational programs where they they need to. Get their hands on, uh, cookware and actually and actually learn how to be adults, uh, not just at home but at school and. And kind of supplement that at-home learning, right? We also have the science rooms that are kind of not laid out, that science rooms has architects and engineers will lay them out now. So, uh, we're making do with what space we have. Saying that, uh, yes, our full-time employment is or our full-time, uh, enrollment is a hundred and eighty-eight with a. Two hundred and forty-six percent capacity, our actual space to kid is at capacity at the middle school. Uh, it just doesn't work out very well number-wise. Meanwhile, good news at the high school. Full-time enrollment is two hundred and eighteen. Uh, we do have a headcount of two hundred and forty-one students up at the high school right now, which is great. A lot of the students are in either running start programs or, uh, using utilizing the. College in the high school programs where Central Washington University will provide credits to, uh, math, science and English classes. Uh, so that they can get a head start on their four-year degree as well. I myself was a beneficiary of that program back back in, uh, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when I was in high school and. It really made college a little bit easier to get those two years of math credits out of the way. Noting that, so two hundred and eighteen of full-time enrollment, uh, we have a capacity of, uh, three hundred and eighty-two. So just the, just over half, uh, there is, uh, discussion from the school board and the the staffing to see how we can. Massage which classes are where and how how we, uh, kind of meet those demands, but. Understanding that we do need to come up with a, uh, longer-term goal of either a new building or working with the city to. Figure out how a new school work within a community, uh, and. That's something that we're open to. Uh, we'll see, last but not least, uh. The superintendent, uh. Is is fully open to working with the city to making sure that we are meeting and and. Understanding all of the requirements that we can do as a as a school district to. Meet and exceed our our revenue, uh, streams. We want a broad area there, uh, and in doing so, uh. Mandy Kruger won a grant for the the playground at the elementary school, three hundred thousand dollar project. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars of it was paid for, uh, by a grant and then, uh, we got the cost down a little bit and thirty-three thousand came from the PTO, so. Uh, we saw a huge, huge benefit there, uh, kids really love it and, uh, it actually is easy to play on when it's wet outside. Uh, yeah, if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out to me directly, uh, or the school board or Brennan. And we would love to talk with you guys, uh, to make sure that we're we're. Having our impact fees adjusted and and as needed, uh, it was our understanding, it was my understanding. Back from the twenty twenty-two discussions that we had asked for a fifteen thousand dollar impact fee from the county and they had. Uh, rejected that and then, uh, previously or or recently. I think they were looking at a thirty-five hundred or or three thousand dollar impact fee.
And when that fifteen thousand came to the city, uh, I said that if the county is not. Being is not taking anything, that it doesn't seem right for the city limits.
Yeah.
Housing to have to. Pick up the slack.
Yeah, so I think we would like.
That's that's a better, that's a better number. It would be nice if you guys can go after the county.
Yeah, and I think because based on our discussions on Thursday, Wednesday, last week was that, uh. The county is more open now to discussing that, and we'll be going after more impact fees tonight.
Yeah, so I would get with Chris next door because he's already done a lot of the legwork. Um, and I know he's gone down there and opened up the conversation and so rather than you guys doing it on your own. Um, definitely teaming up and that was kind of my initial, um, reach out to Jania's. I was like, hey, I'm getting ready to sit with the fire station. Like, let's all get together and it was like, I mean, obviously they didn't know what was going on, but, um. I mean, we should, like, they've got knowledge, I've got knowledge. You guys are needing it, you know what I mean? So if we can all sit down and try to do it together, but definitely reaching out to the county and the sooner the better, because the clock's ticking. Um, you guys gotta get down there and and I'm not sure exactly who they're dealing with at the county, but Chris does have all that information. Um, and like I said, I I told Mandy I'd sit with Jania and kind of go over it. It's it sounds really scary. It sounds like a lot of work, but once you get it set up. I mean, it's it's one point five million dollars or no point five million dollars, you know, like, that's not, there's not a lot of.
Well, there was some thought also, like, if we if we have an, uh, impact fee that's assessed to. Houses in the within city limits or without or outside of city limits even, uh, that the property. Values are gonna raised by that impact fee because that person's, uh, house is gonna be sold to make up for that, right? It's passed down to the person that's buying it and then because that house sold for five, ten thousand dollars more to pay for the impact fee. Now, my property is worth five or ten thousand more and we see that impact our existing customers as well.
Yeah.
This is the important thing I see about the impact fees is it's putting the onus on the new. People to to help offset more the cost than just coming at the existing reference with residents with another bond.
Right.
And the interest you guys are gonna get from that as well is massive. I mean, you're looking at several thousand dollars a month, just in interest.
Yeah, and then also, uh, we we are looking at how we can and how we we should use that fund and and. How we can offset or or supplement that fund as well, uh, with other outside funding options.
Yeah, and it's not, um, is it Carol? What was her name, the lady on the other school board, Buzzwell? She's Heidi, yeah, she was thinking it was like limited to only buildings and it's not, like, there are a lot of stipulations. Um, there, you know, it's it's.
Additions, portables.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's. Exactly. Yeah, so it's exactly, and I mean, it's not, it again, it's not the the fix-all, but it's definitely a a Band-Aid, you know, or. Can kind of get you guys through, but, um, yeah, I mean, if they want to reach out, I definitely think Brendan needs to get with Chris and get with the Lewis County, because. Again, it's it's not fair that, you know, I I would say probably at least fifty percent of your students are outside city limits, am I right?
Well, the bulk of the new stu- students is are coming from outside of the city.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's.
We haven't seen that.
New big developments, all of Tucker and all of, uh, Toledo Vader.
Yeah.
Gonna be massive to to the school district and and to our community. It's gonna be, it's gonna be great to have a lot more kids and. And a lot more students.
Yeah.
A lot more families within the area, spending more money within the city and, uh, we want to make sure that. School district is accounted for as well.
Yeah, great. So yeah, just let me know and I can set up a meeting and I'm gonna have all that stuff for.
Uh, you can have everything except for this.
That notes on there, yeah, just kidding.
No, this one's the superintendent report that's under the executive.
Does that have the the counts? The student counts or is?
Yeah, I can I can give you that part.
Yeah, you wanna just.
So. An additional selling point is if you did not go after the impact fees. Any future bonds that you propose would not be looked at very well.
Right, yeah, so we wanna, yeah, we definitely need the the voting public to know that we are going after all the funding that we can, not just your.
If it's money, we should take it.
So that feasibility study, it sounds like you guys have everything you need. We just need to know that it was approved by the school board and it sounds like we just need to get it back in front of council. And then that's all all we need and we did, um, I met with Catherine McCoy from, uh. Department of Commerce today too, and I know she had spoke to Brennan, um, and she just, and she said to say that the school district does not need a comp plan. It's not a comprehensive plan, it's just your capital facilities plan is all you need.
Yep, so we have our capital facilities plan, uh, part of that comp plan is also our budget.
Correct.
For the, or or. Oh, I'm I'm blanking on this whole name of it, but it's our our. Scheduled out what we're expecting for our budget over the next five years and and we've had that updated within the last two years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you guys are good to move forward, then we'll start, we'll get this in front of council and then we can get it to Todd.
Yep, talk to Brennan as well.
Okay.
And Jania and make sure that they're. Up to speed. This is also going to be on our board agenda for next board meeting.
I'll be there.
So if you have any more questions for the board, feel free to come to there.
And they are welcome to come and see us too.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Well, Adam's gonna start coming and planning.
I'm gonna start coming to planning.
The next board meeting is.
So our board meetings are on the third Wednesday, every month. Uh, it is at.
That's planning commission night too.
Yep.
Yeah, let me let me verify. I think it is. Your our our meeting is at, uh, seven o'clock this next time instead of six thirty, which is our regular meeting due to a. Superintendent. Review.
We can try to make it if we're done.
Well, we we typically on a on a very slack business day get out about six forty-five. But we've stayed as late as nine o'clock.
Right.
Depends on how much, how many items you have Todd as the speaker.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you so much.
For the update.
So we will move on to the workshop schedule discussion. So I know this is something that we were doing workshops every single month. Are we wanting to continue with that? Are we wanting to do every other month? Um, what do we want to focus on?
Um, I, we do need to schedule one for February. We've got a couple of things that are coming out. Um, I think we can just kind of see what's on our plate. I know I've got the personnel policy that I've kind of chunked up. Um, and then a couple of other things that we can look at.
I'd rather do monthly for an hour than every other month or longer. To be honest.
Okay. Okay, so we'll continue with the monthly. It will be.
Second meeting, so. Yep, so the first meeting is the finance one then, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
And then I know before it was, you were scheduled from four thirty to five thirty. And then I know before it was, you were scheduled from four thirty to five thirty and then a half an hour break for council, is everybody still okay with that?
I thought we were starting at four.
We were starting at four.
We were starting at four.
You go on an hour and a half.
Always went almost to council.
I'm okay with it for.
Okay.
And Rachel never brought treats.
I, I didn't, I brought waters today.
And you won't have to, you will have to be one of those. The workshops.
I'm running the workshops.
I will not, I'm working.
Fine, put me to work.
You asked for it, literally. Four, four o'clock, second meeting of every month. And then, uh. I guess we'll just do like we have been doing and they'll just publish what we're doing, okay. Okay.
And then, so as far as our oaths tonight, we decided that it was just the one, correct?
Yep.
So we do have to do an oath of office for then, the new grant committee.
Do you have a second copy?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you're wonderful.
Didn't know I was gonna give you that something.
That's good.
All right. I will have you raise your right hand and try to refuse to me. I, Joe Jones, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Joe Jones, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Grant Committee.
Uh, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the City of Toledo Grant Committee.
To the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States.
To the best of my ability in accordance with the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The laws of the State of Washington and the ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
The laws of the State of Washington and the ordinances and regulations of the City of Toledo.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency and fairness in all grant committee activities and decisions.
I will uphold and adhere to the principles of integrity, transparency and fairness in all grant committee activities and decisions.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
I will strive to promote the public welfare and act in the best interest of the City of Toledo.
All right, thank you so much and welcome aboard to that. And I'll have you come say my name for us.
There, hoops for you.
And I know the others that are on the committees have our reasons to an end to not use those.
So we don't need to take another oath.
You're already oath.
You're already oath.
You're already four.
Oh, so we will go ahead and open it up for any public input this evening. Nobody jumped. No executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion we adjourn.
May, motion by Eric, circuit to by Jamie, all those in favor.